Ready? Okay.
Okay. I call the meeting to order here at 5:55, 5:33. Roque, Ms. Garcia. Roque, please.
President Husky.
President.
Vice President Lumentino.
Here.
Secretary Balagati. Members Seattle.
Here.
And Member Belson. We have a call.
A modification or approval of agenda, Ms. Stigney.
Vice President Lumentino, we do have some modifications this evening. Under Item Two, informational, Items Two A and Two B will be removed. That's the budget balance report and the monthly revenue. Item Two C will be moved up to Item Two A. Which is, Two A is now the construction update.
Okay.
We will need approval.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to amend today, tonight's agenda as discussed by Ms. Stigney.
Second?
Second on the motion.
Okay. Roque, Ms. Garcia.
Vice President Lumentino.
Yes.
President Husky.
Yes.
And Members Seattle.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any citizens input?
Vice President Lumentino, we have no citizens input. We have no tribal council input, but we do have Z-Fuse input this evening. It's nice to see everybody here. With the, we're passing the torch for our certified president. Carla Katana left the district and we were searching for a new president for the certified. And we were able to secure one. So I would like to introduce co-president Carrie. And she will introduce herself to you.
Thank you.
I'm Carrie Loretto. I've been with the district since 2014. And I did volunteer to take on the president's role interim until they hold their next election.
Well, welcome.
Welcome. Informational budget balance report. Ms. Garcia. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Vice President Lumentino, members of the board. There hasn't been a lot of things happen since our last meeting. However, there have been a few things that have happened. The company that is doing the athletic complex has made it back and they have put the second rubberized coating down on the track. They now have to seal it. They would have already done that, but the wind has prevented that from finishing. The temperature's up, but the wind has stopped us. So as soon as the wind dies down enough for them to put that coating on there, they'll be finished with that. It will have to set for a couple of weeks and cure before they will be able to stripe it. Mr. Carroll has been in contact with Mr. Harper and they're, I believe, coordinating the striping. I know he wants to be here when that happens. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that brought, that, that will be close to the completion of the athletic complex. No, we don't have any bleachers on the home side, but that will be part of the fieldhouse project. But the visitor's side bleachers are in place. They have, they are wired for sound and internet and everything else. So we should be good. We do have a generator that's already located over there to be able to light everything up for any football games. That will probably have to happen for one or perhaps two football seasons as we await the arrival of the Transformer for that part of the project. The auger cast piles, the deep piers, have all been drilled and cemented. They are done. They are checking the, each one to make sure that they pass the pressure tests. There are some of them that have failed, that they will end up having to drill new holes right next to the ones they have now and do a secondary one. I don't know why some of them are so good and some of them come out so poor, but there's some of them that, for whatever reason, did, just did not pass. And they are also forming up and pouring a lot of the, a lot of foundational work that goes on top of those. So that they'll be able to start the foundation of the building and get the floors poured and do everything they have to do to, to give us a building that starts to rise out of the, out of the ground. The, all of the teachers, teacherages have at least the protective coating on the roofs. I haven't been out there for a week, so I don't know if they've been able to start putting metal on them or not. I know they were waiting for the metal to arrive. They are working inside on plumbing and on the electrical. They're moving right along. If anybody would like to go out there and take a tour, they can contact me and I can get ahold of Jeff and he'd be more than happy to take anybody out there. They do have a vehicle they will drive you around in if you would like to do that.
I'd like to do that.
Yeah.
The other project, the HVAC remodel of the current Zuni House School, High School teacherage, as you know, because you approved the award, has been awarded to Rick Murphy. We will be having a meeting this week with Rick Murphy and Steve Alano of Greer Stafford to outline the, the construction schedule on this and get all the parts and pieces ordered and they'll proceed on that project. From what I understand, the units that they will be putting in them are not on back order, that they are easily available. So that project should move very rapidly. Are there any questions on the construction?
Any questions, Board?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you.
Going into action items. A, consideration and approval for overnight and out-of-state trip for Zuni High School cross-country meet in Colorado, Chris Carroll.
Good evening again, Ms. Lumentino, Mr. Husky, Mr. Sautwa. As I mentioned this afternoon, I do have two cross-country meets overnight. I'd like to take the kids to Colorado, up to Grand Junction, Colorado, to run in the Grand Junction Central Warrior Invitational. And also down to Phoenix, Arizona, to run in the Desert Twilight Meet. Are there any questions?
I don't have any.
I don't have any? Oh, there's one. Bananas, what are they? I mean, I know what bananas are.
I was gonna say bananas are a fruit, but. We'll do something that night, you know? Bananas is a small amusement park that has putt-putt golf, things like that, but. I'll be in, I'll be up there in a few weeks and I'll, I just want to make sure we find something for the kids to do. So we don't come out of dinner and sit at the hotel for three hours. I don't want that to happen. So we'll find an activity for them or, you know, somewhere we can go where they're, you know, participating in something positive.
And Mr. Carroll, once you get a roster, you'll get that information?
Once the roster is set, I will share that with the board.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second, the motion to approve the consideration, action item A and B.
Okay, thank you. The next one, Mr. Carroll, consideration to approve the.
She's gotta do.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay.
Ms. Garcia, can I have the Roque?
Vice President Lumentino?
Yes.
President Husky?
Yes.
And Members Seattle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, we're good?
Yes.
Okay.
You've got another one. You have another one.
You have another one.
The one in Arizona.
Arizona.
I thought I did them both at the same time, my bad. I didn't know that. All right. Good evening again. Also like to take cross-country team down to the Twilight, Desert Twilight Meet in Arizona. This is probably the largest meet in the United States. They run over 12 races. And I think it'd be a good experience for our kids. The race we're looking at would be the boys and girls would run the championship race, which would be at nine o'clock at night, so. It would be under lights. And I think of, you know, being down at a low elevation, which gives some outstanding times and build that confidence.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions?
It should be a cool 90 degrees or so.
Yeah.
And you are exactly right.
Could I have a motion to approve?
I motion to approve the consideration for overnight travel to Phoenix, Arizona, for the cross-country team.
Could I have a second?
Second on the motion.
Ms. Garcia, could I have Roque?
Vice President Lumentino?
Yes.
President Husky?
Yes.
And Members Seattle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlson, IDEA budget.
Good evening, Board members. I am seeking approval for the IDEA budget tonight. I know that you all had a chance to look at it. I'm ready to answer any questions you may have and hopefully move on and get it approved.
Board, is there any other questions?
I don't know if this was asked earlier, but there are two general supplies line items in your budget. Can you kind of differentiate those for me?
So one of the general supplies that we have is for K through 12, special education. And the other general supplies is for the Head Start. Has to be funded differently from each other.
So the lesser amount is Head Start?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I have no more questions.
Is there any questions?
Could you go over the abbreviation, the NMERB? BNHC, what are those line items?
So Martin might have to jump in and help out with this. This is, those top pieces are the salaries and the NMERB. I think that's just the benefits and things that have to be paid in for salaries and benefits for employees.
Okay.
It's a retirement.
ERB is.
Retirement.
Yes, that is the, all of the special education, EA's educational assistance are funded out of IDEA. And so we have to pay their salaries and their benefits.
Okay, that explains it.
Okay. Any more questions?
I don't have any.
Okay, I don't have, can I have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve the budget for IDEA B.
Could I get a second?
Second, the motion to approve the 2025, '26 budget that's presented.
Okay. Ms. Garcia, Roque vote, please.
Vice President Lumentino?
Yes.
President Husky?
Yes.
And Members Seattle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Consideration and approval of AI policy, Mr. Simons.
Good evening, Vice President Lumentino and members of the board. We had our third reading today for the artificial intelligence use policy for the Zuni Public School District. I've left the last revisions that we've made on there. On the first page, it's in red. That's our definition of cheating. Mr. Joseph Chama came up with that and we thought it was, was very simple and very direct. And we liked that definition of cheating as far as AI is concerned. And then under section four, we added Item Eight, Protection of Culture. I believe Board Member Seattle wrote that one. And that gave us a pretty good idea of what we should watch out for as far as culture is concerned. And then on the last page, we added the, clause there at the end that basically says that since AI changes frequently, the Zuni Public School District reserves the right to change this document anytime it is needed. Do we have any questions?
You have any questions?
I did, but it shouldn't hold up the approval process under section four, the very beginning. These provisions apply while on district facilities, using district-owned technology and accessing district networks. Does this policy apply to students if they're at home using technology provided by the district to access their private networks?
If they're using district-owned technologies such as laptops, Chromebooks, whatever, then yes, it would be.
Okay. I just reread it and I see that. That was the only one I had. But the other one was, I was gonna ask, so the, the red lines are still there and.
Yes.
You actually answered that, so I'm not gonna worry about that.
Yeah, so once this is approved, those, those red, red words will go away and they'll become part of the.
Okay.
Any more questions?
President Husky, I would also add our AUP, our Acceptable Use Policy that's already in effect, includes any time that the students would use our devices. Anything that's checked out to them, it means that they're under the same jurisdiction.
And I did ask Mr. Romans earlier if the student success guide references anything in there. And he said, we all want, we approve this, so. So those are the only things there.
Okay, any questions?
Any questions?
I don't have anymore.
Can I have a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve the third reading of the AI policy with the Zuni Public School District.
Could I have a second?
Second on that motion.
Ms. Garcia, Roque vote, please.
Vice President Lumentino?
Yes.
President Husky?
Yes.
And Members Seattle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Romine.
Okay, Ms. Romine. A Vice President. Go ahead and, we'll combine all three E through three J and then I will be asking you to approve the bars en masse. Go ahead, Mr. Romine.
Vice President Lumentino, then I will give an explanation of each one and ask for questions as I address each one, is that fine?
That will be fine.
Vice President Lumentino, members of the board, you have six bars in front of you tonight. The first two, numbers 48 and 49, are both decreases based on final award letters from PED. We did not get these award letters, they call them award letters, but it's a reverse award, I guess. We did not get these award letters until early June. We always have struggle when PED decides to reduce our money at the last minute. But I reduced line items that had money that had not been spent or encumbered on both of those bars. But as I say, they're both decreased for the same reason. Are there any questions on bar number 48 or 49? Bar 51 is a void because I created a transfer when I should have created a maintenance bar.
You missed two.
Bar number 52 is a maintenance bar and fund $11,000 just to move money between the 21 and 2200 functions, I believe, to make sure that neither one of them was overdrawn based on the budget that we had. It's not budgeting additional funds or reducing them, it's just moving them within the budget. Bar number, oh, I missed, I'm sorry, I missed bar number 50. It's initial budget for fund $60,000. Some of you may remember Stephanie Anton that used to teach here in the district. When she left, she left a substantial amount of money split between cash and stocks of individual companies to be used for scholarships in drama fields and we were never able to offer any scholarships from those funds. I visited with her brother and he was concerned about getting that money awarded in scholarships. He said to just use it for whatever field the students want to go into. So this year, there were four scholarships awarded out of these funds, two for $5,000 each, two for $2,500 each. But it's difficult to sell stocks in the amounts of the scholarships. So what we decided, and I believe we talked, I think the board approved this at their last meeting, was to sell the stocks, take the money that was, that was earned and move that into an investment account where we're easily, where we're easily able to get cash out of it. So I was able to do that. Right now, the money is sitting in our operational fund pending writing those four scholarship checks. Once that is done, we will open an account with Morton Capital where we have our other money invested. And depending obviously on rates, interest rates and rates of return, we will be able to fund scholarships for decades. The amount of money that was in there was in the neighborhood of $280,000.
Wow.
So we'll have money for scholarships. And if the district wants to change the makeup of the scholarships, whatever, the district has full authority to do that. Are there any questions? Now, one thing I must say, those amounts were always included in our audits. The audit, our auditors always saw them, they knew they were there, there was a place where they always included them. That place will just now change because we are, we now will control those funds through our software system, my visions. Are there any questions on this bar?
Can you tell us how the awards were determined?
How, what was determined?
How, the scholarships were determined?
I visited with counselors in the district and asked them to come up with a scholarship application. And I also asked them to be the committee that scored the applications and awarded the scholarships.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, bar number 52 I did touch on already. Bar number 53 is an increase. It is Title VII, which is the Impact Eight Indian Ed. It is simply budgeting the amount of revenue received this year over what was budgeted at the beginning of the year. There were a couple of salary lines in Function 1000 that we moved people into, so it was under budgeted. I put the money in there to cover those under budgeted lines. Are there any questions on bar number 53 or any of the others that I have discussed?
I don't have any.
Any questions, okay. Good, Board. Okay, go ahead and can I have a motion to approve this bars en masse?
I will make a motion to approve bar number 48 through 53 as presented.
Could I have a second?
I have second, the motion to approve these bars en masse as discussed.
Oh, I forgot to include en masse.
En masse. Ms. Garcia, can Roque vote?
Vice President Lumentino?
Yes.
President Husky?
Yes.
And Members Seattle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, May check registers, Mr. Romine.
Vice President Lumentino, members of the board, you have in front of you the May check registers for the teacherage federal programs, food services, athletics and operations. If you have any questions, if you would just tell me which bank category you would like to look at and I will pull them up.
Have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, Mr. Romine, page 33, out of Operational Pinnacle Bank, check number 41411. It's healthcare authority, medical assistance. What is a Fairbanks fee?
Vice President Lumentino, President Husky, Fairbanks is, within Medicaid, there is what is called Medicaid School-Based Services. Every quarter, we file a report with a company called Fairbanks that outlines special education-related services for teachers, ancillary staff and health-related staff, people. We are able to recoup a portion of those expenditures. It's generally between $20,000 and $25,000 a quarter. That fee is the fee that we pay to Fairbanks for those services.
In the same page there. 41412, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, Hilliard Incorporated. What are those for?
Vice President Lumentino, President Husky, Hilliard is the company out of Flagstaff. We purchase the, whatever coatings we put on the gym floors during the summer to protect them for the upcoming volleyball and basketball seasons.
Threw me off when it says trophy on there.
Yeah, it has trophy.
It says trophy on there.
I think that is the name of the product.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
I don't have any.
We don't have any questions, can I have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve the check registers for May.
Could I have a second?
I second the motion to approve the May check registers.
Okay, Ms. Garcia, Roque vote, please.
Vice President Lumentino?
Yes.
President Husky?
Yes.
And Members Seattle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The bar authority?
Vice President Lumentino, members of the board, at the end of each school year, we find different funds that may need adjustments to their budgets. All budget adjustment requests have to be approved by the board. And PED at the end of the year has set some pretty strict deadlines as to when we can submit budget adjustment requests. There sometimes are times when I find budget adjustment requests between the June meeting and the end of June that I need to submit. If I find that this year, what I'm asking for is a letter of authorization from you as a board to submit those to PED and then submit them to the board for ratification at your July meeting.
Are there any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Could I have a motion to approve this authority?
I make recommendation, motion to give Mr. Romine the authority for the bar.
I make recommendation motion to give Mr. Romine the authority for the bar authority as presented.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Garcia, can I have a vote?
President? Vice President Lumentino?
Yes.
President Hasky?
Yes.
And Member Seattle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. On approval of minutes, May 12, 2025, regular finance meeting. I'll give you a few minutes to look over if you've already done, so I guess you can.
Sorry.
Okay.
They usually can't handle the board, which do you know?
I don't have any questions.
Any questions?
No.
Could I have a approval to for this move?
I'll make a motion to approve the May 12 regular finance meeting minutes.
Can I have a second?
Second. Motion to approve.
Ms. Garcia, roll call vote, please.
Vice President Lumentino?
Yes.
President Hasky?
Yes.
And Member Seattle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
What was that? What was, it just went out.
I'm the only one here. Yeah, you'll need to say that.
Okay. At this time, we're going to go into executive session. We're limited for limited personnel matters to discuss superintendent's contract and other limited personal personnel matters as permitted under the section 10-15-1H2 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. Okay, Board, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve going into executive session.
Can I have a second?
Second, the motion to go into an executive session.
Ms. Garcia. Invited. Invited. And we also are inviting Ms. Dignity to the executive session. Ms. Garcia, roll call vote, please.
Vice President Lumentino?
Yes.
President Hasky?
Yes.
And Member Seattle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Where are we going? Talk first.
Okay.
HR.
Okay.
Okay.